I'm the chairman of the Executive Committee for the National Space Society. The intention of this activity is to serve as a town hall meeting. We'll offer a few words of introduction, both by myself and a number of the senior leaders of the society. We've asked that there be representation of all the officers and whatever board members could to be available to answer any questions you might have about the state of the society, ongoing work of the society, and then venture into the broader discussion of what the membership thinks of what we're doing and how we can do it better. So, to that end, as chairman of the Executive Committee, I'm pleased to report that the National Space Society in 2007 is a vital organization striving to bring our membership the broadest set of opportunities for engagement in furthering our advance towards a spacefaring society. Indeed, it is an organization firmly committed to seeing our future as the spacefaring society made manifest. Earlier this year, the NSS board gathered together for a special meeting to get some calibration as to what we really meant by that commitment. By the time everyone had a chance to have their say, there were more opinions on the table than there were board members present.[103.03][103.03](Laughter). Yet, we all listened, and when we considered as a group what was said in the written legacy passed on to us, we found our way past the words into a common ground of understanding. We did not say the same things, but the pieces of the puzzle fit together. Surely, none of us should be paid to edit by the word, but we did manage to articulate our versions of the mission, vision, and principles of NSS that let us find community. At the ISDC 2005, the goal for NSS to become the preeminent space organization that builds and fosters connections between the diverse individuals, organizations, companies, agencies, and governments that comprise the greater space community was established. Through the dedicated efforts of our organization's leadership team and in the increasing engagement of our membership, both internally, within the greater space community, and with the public at large, we have seen demonstrable proof of our progress to that goal. And, our progress toward that goal continues in no uncertain terms. The goal for ISDC 2007 was that the society strive to bring our membership the broadest set of opportunities for engagement in furthering our advance towards a spacefaring society. Indeed, we take up the gauntlet of doing what is necessary to provide for a positive future we would want to see come to pass. Space, while not a panacea, offers dimensions of opportunity, of inestimable value. It can, and ultimately will, make the difference with respect to the survival of our species. So, the more connections we make every day, the more cooperative ventures that we establish, the more we spur individuals and organizations to articulate what they think the future should be, and what they are doing to make it manifest, the more powerful our contribution to the discussion becomes. In this effort, I believe our principal advantage is that we have an optimistic, personally engaging view of what the future could be. In the marketplace of ideas, we bring to the table the option of a positive future as a spacefaring society, a society committed to the exploration and development of space, a society that aspires to build new worlds. A worldview which is viral in the sense that it does not require a particular ideology in order to be compelling. As the leaders of the National Space Society, it is up to each of us to bring our voices to the broader discussions within which we live, work, and raise our families. It is up to each of us to have our actions reflect what we value. Our society and our members' efforts to help blaze the path to a spacefaring society have already made an enormous difference, but there's much more to do, and we all benefit from asking the question as to what we are going to do today to make a difference and then carrying through. I am proud to report that the society will be an important part of making that future happen, and we look forward to the honor and privilege of working with all of you to hasten the day that we achieve the goal of living and working in thriving communities beyond Earth and the use of the vast resources of space for the dramatic betterment of humanity. Thank you all for joining us today. What I'm going to go off and do is we have up on stage Kirby Eichen, the chairman of the Board of Directors, Mark Hopkins, Senior Vice President and Operating Officer, George Whitesides, the Executive Director for NSS. I'm going to ask them all to say a few words should they care to, and we have a number of members of both the Executive Committee and Board here, and would love to answer any questions anybody has and further discussion. Thank you all for being here.[361.62][361.62](Applause).
You already told me you were going to make a speech.
I did.
Let me tell you something, have a story. This is to indicate just how far we have come with regards to moving towards our long-range goal of space settlement broadly defined, or more precisely, of space settlement broadly defined, or more precisely, space settlement and the additional trays that we're interested in the vast resources of space and their utilization for the betterment of mankind. If you go back in time to when the concept of what we're talking about really began in the modern era, this was with Gerard O'Neill. And he was at the time that he wrote his seminal article on the subject, which really began it all, which was 1974, this one was published. He actually wrote it considerably before that, and the reason there is a large distance in time between those two dates is because he had a very difficult time getting it published. And that's what my story is about. He wrote this article, and he was a professor of physics at Princeton University, which at the time was one of the top three or so universities in the world with regards to prestige as far as physics was concerned. He was a fully tenured professor, lots of prestige, used to be treating very well, lots of published articles, et cetera. And he wrote this article about space settlement, and he sent it off to one of the leading physics journals, which was the one that he had the most influence with in the sense that he had some friends there, et cetera. And they rejected the article. Well, O'Neill is a very determined sort of individual, so he sent the article off to another leading physics journal, and they rejected it. And he sent it off to his third journal, and they rejected it. He eventually sent it to every reasonably credible journal of physics that existed, and they all rejected it. Well, O'Neill decided, actually, he told me that he thought about publishing it in a science fiction magazine, like, say Analog, and he was confident that wouldn't be a problem because it's pretty cool for in a magazine like Analog. But then he decided that would send the wrong message, and I think he was right about that. So instead, what he did is he went on a lecture circuit, and he'd go around to these colleges, which were, you know, various universities, which because of his reputation, he could speak at, and he'd speak at the lectures for a physicist where they have all the physics grad students and anybody else who wanted to show up, and sometimes bigger lectures of students. And this was during the period when limits to growth was a big concept among the chattering classes, among intellectuals, and also on college campuses. And one of the things about limits to growth is it really depressed a lot of students. They would think about, you know, this is what my future is going to be, sort of like global warming today, which is big on campus and really depicts a fairly depressing future as far as students are concerned. Well, as O'Neill once told me, he was really gratified to get up there and talk in front of these students. He was a charismatic speaker. And he liked to watch the change on the expression of the faces of some of these students as his ideas began to penetrate them. Because what would happen is that their faces would change, and they would, instead of being sort of gloomy or, you know, thinking, "What's this? Space settlements? I'm a physics student. Why am I here?" They'd start getting excited. Their faces would glow, their eyes would light up. And then after the lecture was over, instead of the typical situation where some lecturer would come in and they'd ask him questions for maybe 15 minutes, they would bombard him with questions. And this would go on for like, one, two, even three hours. Finally, after one of these lectures, a man who had been sitting in the back of the room came up to O'Neill and started talking to him and said, "Well, look, I'm editor-in-chief of Physics Today," which is one of the top journals in physics, "and we rejected your article like, a while back. But now that I see what the reaction of all these students, I have reconsidered and will publish your article." So that's how the Physics Today article, which started it all, began in 1974. And the reason I bring this up is I want to compare this with the situation which exists today. Today, our ideas have made enormous progress. The administrator of NASA, Michael Griffin, is saying wonderful things about space settlement and utilization of resources in the solar system, et cetera, in many different venues, speech after speech. Paraphrase one speech, he said that the overarching goal of the human space program is settlement of the solar system and eventually beyond. And to give a precise quote, "No greater purpose is possible," end quote. Other people, such as Marburger, who's the president's science advisor, has made a speech where he said, "The purpose of the core program at NASA today, which is the vision for space exploration, is to eventually incorporate the resources of the solar system into the economic sphere of humanity." The stated reasons, there are six major reasons that NASA has officially stated for going back to the moon. One of them is to enable space settlement. A second one is to incorporate the moon into the economic sphere of human activity. There has been truly an enormous change from where we began to where we are now, and much of this, in my opinion, is due to National Space Society and its precursor organization, the L-5 Society, which have pushed many of these goals.[772.51][772.51](Applause). Thank you.
Kirby, would you like to say a few words?
First of all, let me thank you all for being here on a Monday morning on a holiday weekend. After several days of presentations, it's fantastic to see that we've got so much interest in the vitality of the National Space Society and to see what lies ahead for us. And personally, I think it's an absolutely incredible time to be a part of the pro-space movement. I've been involved with NSS and the L-5 Society as one of its predecessors for 22 years, I think it is now. And rarely, except in the last year or two, have I ever had the true sense that we can all be a part of the development of space settlements, and in particular, the fact that we are going on now to back to the moon and onto Mars. And in the history of my own time in the space movement, I never really had that tangibly ahead of us. And as Mark said, I have absolutely no doubt that the National Space Society has been a part of influencing some of those things, even by instilling background beliefs and ideals. But not only do we have this fantastic opportunity to participate in the vision for space exploration and to make things move forward towards our goals, but we also have this incredible new space age, this era of commercial space development. And those of you who were able to attend one of the luncheon talks a couple of days ago with Eric Anderson, we were hearing about how close they are to a commercial mission around the moon, not to land on the moon. But you can imagine, we are now possibly within years of commercial endeavors being able to send people around the moon. And I think it's going to be tremendously exciting to watch the convergence of both the new space, the commercial space initiatives, the government-financed initiatives, and to see what starts to play out over the course of the next few years. And never before have I seen so many exciting developments tangibly within reach. Now, we don't have to be dreaming 10, 15, 20 years ahead. In a couple of years, we will see Virgin Galactic flying, we will see rocket plane Kissler flying, we will see more private tourists going into space, hopefully, private tourists going to the moon, around the moon. So it's a time of unparalleled opportunity for organizations like NSS and people like you, who are dedicated enough to be here today, to have your say, to influence the future, and to help bring about the goals and dreams that we all aspire to through the National Space Society. So, I don't really want to say more than that, other than to say, "Look, this is an incredible period in human space endeavor, and we're all here to try to make things happen more quickly." And obviously, during this session, you have an opportunity to give us your thoughts and to raise questions, but I just hope you appreciate what a fantastic time this is to be a part of NSS. Thank you.[973.31][973.31](Applause).
George?
I think, why don't we just move on to the question part? I mean, let's talk. Thanks for coming.
Do we have a question? Yes.
My name is David Cozad. I've been a software engineer and now I've been forced to be a teacher. I'm too old to be an engineer anymore, terrifying. My question to you is, is the National Space Society going to take advantage of the situation of peak oil to show the world that we can increase the size of the pie for everybody? And are we going to drive towards that solution, or energy solution, as our primary goal? Is anything else to adjust tourism?
Question was raised, is the National Society going to make an effort to take advantage of our transition through peak oil to utilize the energy alternatives to be able to help, you know, bring us some real options going into the future? I believe the answer to that is emphatically yes. Specific actions that I can point to is our coordination with a number of groups that have come together specifically to work on a cooperative basis. We have, you know, representatives, you know, from across the community that are attempting to, you know, lay out specific things that can be done, both on a legislative level, a public outreach level, to foster the development of the opportunities for satellite solar power stations in their variety of the forms, as well as recognizing some of the other energy alternatives that, you know, Senator Schmidt had indicated. Absolutely, I think that this is one of the, you know, real things that we can do to make a difference.
Another specific thing we have coming up is it's going to be, originally it was going to be a debate between, originally it's going to be...
If each of the presenters could go to the podium so I can hear you.
Okay. We've been working, putting together a significant presentation in Washington on the SSP issue, which is now tentatively scheduled for October 4th, which is the 50th anniversary of Sputnik. And the speakers, which are tentatively involved in that, will be myself, John Mantekins, who is probably the leading expert on SSP, and with a little luck, it's not nailed down with Buzz Aldrin. And we hope to generate considerable press with that. So that's sort of the next major thing on the SSP agenda.
Speaker, I understood your question right, if that's the, if we're going to devote all or most of our resources towards that end?
I would expect that, considering this, as I've been reading and studying throughout the last year or so, and also from previous work with SSI, that we're looking at the situation that would, if you take Bush's pronouncement back in February on his statement about addiction to oil, that the United States has to reduce its oil dependence by 20% by 2020. This is actually, you know, run the curve, the Hoover's Peak Oil book, that that is where we're going to dab 20% down by 2020. And that basically means is that Bush is now a believer, and if he can believe, then there should be a whole lot of other people believing by now. That also means is that we will be an economic disaster zone by that time, because they don't have an alternative. And I think the National Space Society should be leading the charge with all, if not most of our, resources to drive that issue, and that will pick up everything else.
Absolutely, there is a, you know, compelling interest across the leadership of the society. You know, you may know Darrell Preble, who is on our, is on the Board of Directors, you know, Dr. Paul Werbos, you know, from the National Science Foundation, who's leading the charge with respect to SPS from that vantage point, is on our Board of Advisors. You know, this has, you know, been a compelling interest, you know, from a technical standpoint for me, and quite frankly, you know, we don't, of the options that are available for what's known as baseload power, which is what powers our cities and our industries, you know, hey, there's some regional adaptive systems which we do everything, we should do everything we can to take advantage of, but that still doesn't, you know, put much of a dent in our baseload power requirements. So we, you know, we've got an incredible option here that we've got to do everything we reasonably can to make real. Next question?
Right here. Following along on there, the problem of course is the group, as I, in my analogy, that I've used several times, that we're looking at the goal, which is like the peak of a mountain, the mountain climbing peak, and we're not looking at the path directly ahead of us. And that path directly ahead of us is represented in the form of some very steep precipices by the fact that the cost of putting payloads into orbit approaches $50 million a ton right now. And if we can't get the cost to orbit down, then we're not, never will be able to do solar power satellites and so forth the way we should be able to do it. We might eventually be able to do it from lunar resources, but that's going to take many, many decades to develop lunar infrastructure to achieve. And we need the capability and the ability to build a bunch of power satellites, hopefully within a decade or two, to start mitigating that. So NASA has aggregated and abandoned its role as developer of advanced rocket systems, especially, it had a program of access to orbit that it has abandoned in favor of the narrowly defined repeat of Apollo, similar to Apollo hardware, which has not had that much utility putting bulk stuff into orbit. So, the society as a whole, when it's talking about goals, very often it asks its members individually to send letters to their hackers and so forth, but very often, strict numbers dictates that the group as a whole, in the name of the group, should say these things. And we believe that some of the paths are a little wandering off where they should be on the part of NASA and other groups, that we should state that publicly and say it in our website, say it in our press releases, say it in our white papers and so forth. So that's the thing I think is very high priority, to get the societies a whole to make public statements of where we stand.
Okay, in short, John, the importance of going through and achieving significantly lower launch costs and being able to make, do whatever we can to, you know, keep the broader efforts in terms of systems that are built heading in that direction, I think we have a vital role of that. Specifically, what I'm recommending that the society engage in, in one of the projects, is to try and frame the discussion of what really are launch costs, how we actually characterize them. We have company, we have companies, new ventures, that claim that the reduction in launch costs are a critical part of their business plans. Right now, having had, having had the opportunity over the years, as a space systems engineer, I've worked on a number of, a number of studies. At one point, NASA asked me to try and, you know, calculate what the real costs were of launching Delta rockets. It was real interesting, okay? There's some, you know, very curious mathematics. It turns out, of course, no one really knew, because the things have always been bought on an acceptance basis, and, you know, most of the R and D, well, all of the R and D had been underwritten through various different accounts. What we, what I would argue, you know, as a community, if we can lend our expertise to framing that discussion so that there is a common, a common ground, that each of the different systems that are proposed, both private and government, can be, you know, assessed and evaluated under consistent terms, we may be able to move, you know, move the efforts forward in the direction that makes the most sense. Anyone else like to comment on that? Next question, sir.
I have a couple reservations about solar power satellites. I'm a retired...
Only a couple? Okay.
I'm a retired fish and wildlife biologist. One of the questions is the impact of burnout, which is part of the impact. Secondly, that maybe at least temporary increase in the...
The question was raised that with respect to satellite solar power stations with different beaming technologies, that there are environmental implications, both to, you know, both to wild, potentially to wildlife, and the effect on the heat balance. Strictly speaking, I believe that both, you know, both of those issues have to be accept, have to be carefully considered. One notion, though, to think of, the original studies with respect to power beaming looked at, you know, 2.42 gigahertz. Do you have a current generation portable telephone in your home? Do you know what frequency that runs at? Okay? Two point, you know, the most common ones are 2.4 gigahertz. Okay? So, you know, they, I, it's not to minimize it, okay? You know, because, hell, they're microwave. Okay? But we need to understand that microwave applies to a portion of the electromagnetic spectrum, okay? Some of which excite water molecules very well, others don't. Seeing as how we're carbon-based, mostly bags of water, as the line goes, we have to pay attention to such things as they could affect any, any human or any animal. John, you've already asked one. My apologies if I don't get the order quite right, the lights, you know, kind of...
I'm sure I'm not alone in this room in wishing that a much larger portion of our resources were allocated to space endeavors. And I think from the Apollo program, one can see that something in the vicinity of 1% of GNP is not unreasonable economically if the political will is there. I have not seen, however, recently, a well-publicized and coherent study that shows a rationale for why we should do that and what the country would get for it. Some of us are very successful in arguing for specific projects, which for the most part I agree with, restoring funding for particular planetary missions. We make good arguments for that mission if we're lucky to get it restored, why we should be spending more money on human space exploration, not just robotic, some human exploration of the moon versus of Mars, there are good arguments that each camp has. None of this really increases the pie. It strikes me that this society is uniquely well-placed in terms of the expertise it has. It has world-class writers, engineers, scientists, who can come up with what we could get in all areas, not just specifically planetary exploration, addressing the energy crisis, H3 fusion perhaps with the H3 coming from the moon, solar power satellites, the ability to deflect the threat from Earth impacting asteroids, perhaps also gaining resources from mine... from mining such asteroids once they've been explored and we know what is on them. Putting all of that together and having that in the form of a book or a study that one can not only release to the public, that is readable, that one can put in the hands of congressmen, their staff members, political candidates, and I would suggest that, request that the board consider whether this is a worthwhile goal for society to take on, to prepare such work.
The point was made emphatically that we need to be about the question of what, what's the level of resources that should be put towards the broader problem of, you know, while, you know, moving, you know, space, our space endeavors forward to, as, as a benefit to all of us and specifically going through and taking directed action in terms of, as our society and as our, our members, to get that information out, both to, you know, a, the legislative community and the broader community of the importance and potential value of space-related endeavors. Should they, you know, should we, as a society, be about this? Absolutely. Fundamentally, I, I would ask that all of us rise to the challenge, to put our ideas, our thoughts, where our mouths are, okay? If you can write something, write it, whether or not it's a nice letter to your elected representatives or to a, you know, a learned journal, a paper, or get in front of, you know, some high school students, whatever venue you have available to, or vantage point to work it from, let people know that the opportunities exist for us to make a difference in seeing the future we wish to see come to pass actually happen. Would anyone else?
I think it's a really good idea. We should think about it.
I mean, what I, I think what you just said, I fully agree with, which is all right there to the editor. What I have in mind is something that's a little longer from what one could put in letter to the editor or what any one individual actually has the knowledge or capability to cogently put together. And I think this society is one of the few, and not the only, organization that has the expertise inside it from a whole variety of specialties to bring that together.
Specifically, it was noted that these things go beyond just what one individual can put together. You should be aware that one of the initiatives that we're trying to sponsor as a society is a series of collaborative environments where we can, where we can frame discussions of, you know, critical space-related endeavors, essentially online extensible outlines. If you've been to Wikipedia, there is an NSS, you know, Wiki, which is intended to, you know, begin the outlines for framing these sorts of discussions that we can all contribute to as resources.
Maybe we can talk afterwards about how we might work on that.
Absolutely. Next question, sir.
I wanted to beat a dead horse along the same lines. I think optimism in the face of dire circumstances is a powerful, laudable and essential characteristic. Think of Winston Churchill. But optimism in the face of dire circumstances without acknowledging the difficulties I've seen there, is seen as foolish and self-defeating. Chamberlain. I think the scientific community really has to start treating global warming as something that needs to be triaged, utilizing space as an instrument. And if it doesn't get itself known publicly as being on that side of the argument, if there's even one tenth of truth to global warming, public support for space is just going to dissipate. You're really going to be on the wrong side of the drive. So I really urge you to start thinking in terms of working with the public about how we're part of the solution, not part of the problem.
The, the point was made that as we come to terms with what global warming means, we have to be on the right side of the divide, helping to provide solutions and being a part of the solution. I emphatically agree with you. The way I think of it is, you know, well, basically, you know, the place that we happen to live, you know, the service contracts likely run out on this place. And we've got to learn, you know, through our stewardship of the planet, how to be able to, you know, manage, you know, manage the environment such that, you know, it can sustain it in a, on a, on a reasonable basis going forward. Stan?
If you could follow a question for the audience, if I could, since there's an interest in this topic of global warming. You know, to some degree, we wouldn't know there was a problem with global warming or for space. Obviously, having the perception from satellites to be able to measure what's going on on a global scale rapidly and all, to what degree do you feel that NSS ought to be involved in promoting the fact that, you know, we can put, or advocate for more resources to just understand what the global environmental situation is? We're doing only a minimum amount of space now. There's a lot more that could be done to be able to sense the nature of the problem. And certainly, we're not going to be able to develop solutions to global warming if we don't know what the problem is. How, how much do people appreciate and the membership appreciate space's role in understanding what's going on globally?
Wish to impine on that?
Along those same lines, I think you were asking about what do we get for a 1% of GDP or 1% of the federal budget? About $6 or $7 billion for NASA, assuming that that's what you're talking about.
How much GDP, actually, not federal budget?
All right. Well, it's, it's hard not just trying to get 1% of the federal budget. But I think that that's one of the things that that $6 billion does is it restores funding to a lot of the science projects that scientists have been screaming about the global warming folks and saying, hey, you need to be monitoring this more closely. So I think the 1% thing, which I know George was advocating a while back, is still something to consider, something worth, like, I think, are we including that in WITS? That would be something.
I don't know if we finalize our points, but certainly can, for one, I feel like we should. But I want to make sure that Stan gets his, people have an opportunity to respond to Stan too as well, if they want to.
Would that be appreciated and should we be put back in order?
It would be right along those, what I'm thinking about. Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, I really think that we've got to, got to respond to the immediate crises and emphasize the long-range solutions as a, as a believable concept. But in many ways, I personally have more experience in the environmental community than I do in the science community and, or at least space advocacy. And I absolutely, you know, they do not have any faith in this, in this organization at all. And when push comes to shove, we're going to need to be in a position.
Yes. I was at a conference at ESA Research in Nordike in February, and the whole theme of the conference there was sensing, earth sensing, and apparatus were doing that. And the whole rationale behind why do this? It was really interesting to think of it as a holistic earth sensing system. And they are very much making that argument from their side in the European space agency. So I, I don't know if other people were there or know about it, but that was just past February. The whole theme was sensing the earth.
I didn't know whether or not people have had the opportunity to go out, you know, to the, to the Goddard Space Center website, but there's some incredible, you know, sensor data fusion efforts that are going on. You can, the, the leg.
You know, the, the data comes in at different, you know, time frequencies, but there's an incredible array of, of different, you know, imagery that you can, that you can draw on by, by, you know, by request. They have the system set up, you know, as I said, some of it's, you know, you know, more current data, you know, some of it's on a 24-hour time horizon, some of it is significantly, you know, longer based on how it is that they have it set up. But they're basically taking the data from, you know, the, a large number of the, the remote sensing satellites that are flying now and, you know, trying to, you know, provide an ability to integrate that, to, you know, illustrate what is the state of the system. And so I, you know, it's some incredible, you know, efforts in terms of, you know, understanding that. And I would highly recommend people go out and check it out.
Anthony, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Yeah, just to the point of, I think.
Is Anthony, he's the editor of AdAstrum.
Hi. Yeah. Sorry. I'll speak up. Hi, I'm Anthony Cabrera. I'm the editor of the website space.com, Live Science. I'm also the editor of AdAstrum magazine. I just want to comment on the whole, the concept of global warming and climate change and activation, of course, is very important, but I think we're, we're currently living in a climate and under certain restrictions, which will be changing soon, probably in about 18 months with regards to the administration and if, the administration running this country. And if the NSS wants to get involved and start crossing those boundaries between environmental groups and whatnot, they have to take a long-term approach to that and, and pursue elected officials, agencies, governments with that long view of, it's not of remedying problems and seeing that the funding, what you're selling to the American people when it comes to space, and I think this because I edit a website about space, and, and even though we try to cover everything we can about space, because I know everyone, you know, here, everything's fascinating about space, we do find that there are certain things that capture the public's imagination or interest more than others. And, and though some would say, you know, well, we should be doing more on, you know, lifting bodies, Space.com doesn't do enough stories on lifting bodies and the argument about Harrys and whatnot. Well, guess what? We do enough of them because we know that hardcore people read them, but for the general public, they don't care. And, you know, what we're seeing right now is what people care about, they care about green, they care about the environment, they don't understand why they should care about space. You know, the international, you know, Lisa Noack case is a classic example. Lisa Noack was a personal tragedy that happened, that happened to be the person who became an astronaut. And it was all over. She got more press in a 24-hour period than she did on any of the return to flight missions. When she was risking her life for the country, no one gave a shit, you know? But when suddenly she has People Magazine tabloid cover, they couldn't, you know, they were beaten down the doors to talk to Lisa Noack and people that knew her. And that's how the perception of space is with the public. There has to be something sexy. They don't, they don't get it anymore. They don't understand why we have to go into outer space. And so, and so there are fascinating things happening. When someone like Richard Branson does something like a space tourism or a verbal tan or any of these innovators that are basically making rich people's play toys, and that's fine, but that triggers the imagination. That gets the everyday non-space interested person understanding the value of what space is. And when you're going to move forward on initiatives and show the public why space is important, you have to align it into things that affect their everyday life, that the everyday person will go, oh, that's why I need space. Oh, these satellites help us figure out that, you know, the glaciers are evaporating, you know, monument of pace. These are things, you have to, you have to hone the message for the public and, and think long-term about the people who are in power, whether in agencies or in the EMEA or government, who can respond to what the vast public understands. I guess that's the bottom line, that understand it, wed it together with things that capture the popular imagination or popular concern, and then try and get the people in power and thinking ahead to, you want to think election cycles, two, four, six, you know, to, to make those people get put in place to really affect the change. And that's, you know, my opinion.
Emphatically, Anthony, you're, you're right. We have to find a way to make the connection to, to the public of the, of the inherent value of space to, to our future.
You know, think of it, but it, it's not just a question of words. That picture from Apollo 8 did more to drive home the fact that, you know, we're on a spaceship in a very real sense, okay? The, you know, it's this, this idea, in a sense, you know, I called it the notion of a different perspective. If you have your nose up against a very large concrete wall, it's rather difficult to gain any sense of perspective on it. On the other hand, if you step back from it a bit, you can think, well, you know, maybe I could go around it, maybe I could go over it. But what is that wall from 100 miles up? I'm sorry, we've got to be able to find the perspectives that let us see the context of what really matters in terms of the stewardship of our planet and the survival of our species and our evolution to a spacefaring society.
What Anthony said is that what we have to understand is we have to use the same techniques that works for everybody else. It's a sales job. We've got to bring out the photographs, that give a picture without getting the particular things. As Anthony said, the general public doesn't care whether it's a heavy-laden vehicle of one sort or heavy-laden people or some other sort. They want to see what's in it for me, what's in it for my children. And so if we have a picture like that for space, they get a human side. If we point out to them that, you know, we can save, change global warming and therefore their lives, you know, there was anything that's going to make a difference to them, they can see, they're not going to support us, but not the type of things. They couldn't care less about that.
Okay. Someone has an answer?
I don't know if I have an answer, but my name is Jim Pass and I'm the founder of astrosociology. And what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to bring in the social sciences to space, to , you know, doing space research. And, you know, the NSS, for example, is, has a goal of space settlements, but space settlements are nothing more than societies in space. So my argument is that we need to bring in social scientists who are already trained as social scientists, but also we need to start going beyond the STEM model and start training astrosociologists so that when we, when we go into space, we have social scientists there to, you know, assist and to collaborate. And a lot of these questions that we're asking are actually social scientific and sociological in nature. And so I think the NSS needs to address focusing on more of the general public, which involves individuals who don't happen to be engineers or space architects or space scientists, and bring them into the fold as well. I think we'll have a more well-rounded approach to space.
We've noted the absolute necessity of going through and finding the different, you know, it isn't just, you know, engineering, okay, that there are broad dimensions of the, you know, social sciences, life sciences, what have you, that are critical to our, you know, to our, you know, developing the, the broader community and space. Do you, you wish to venture further commentary?
What, sorry, what's your name?
I'm Jim Pass.
Ah, Jim Pass, right. The father of astrosociology. There you go. Great.
In the back?
Okay. Yeah, I've come to the conclusion over the last few years that the grand purposes and the grand designs don't work, they don't get the public attention. People simply don't care. They're overdosed with causes and we're not going to get, if you want the general public, you're not going to get them that way. Look at what, what people are, are interested in now. Survivor, American Idol, People Magazine, sex, those are the things, if you want to reach the general public, those are the ways you do it, not, not any of this. And as for the grand designs, those people are going to come to us anyway. The people who think that there is some way in which we can use space to do some grand human purpose are probably in this room to start with or coming to our conference. If you want to go outside that box, you're going to have to go outside the box that we have been using for 30 years, which is grand designs. Forget those. Hit them on the things that a PR person will tell you sells soap.
Emphatically noted that, you know, it's just about the grand designs to reach, reach the public on what it is that they care about on a fundamental level. I'd like to introduce the radical notion. You know, arguably, to the extent that a movement is successful, it increasingly mirrors the demographics of the society that supports it. I offer you the, you know, the, the challenge that as we need, in order to be successful as a space movement, we have to find room within the tent, not just for the scientists and the engineers and the, and the geeks and the enthusiasts, but for the social scientists, for the artists, for every aspect of human culture that, you know, represents, you know, not only the best of us, but what we are as, as a species. To the extent that we find ourselves as a movement increasingly mirroring the demographics of the society, we will see ourselves on the road to success in our goals. of the society, we will see ourselves on the road to success in our goals.
Just one quick addition to that, perhaps it's a little bit of a misperception that we get here, but really, the resources of NSS are you, in a large part. And to the extent that the great value of the National Space Society is, it is a very diverse organization. And so people from every walk of life and with every different skill set that we need, when we are creating a society in space, that's you folks in the audience. So it's very valuable for us to get direction, but at the same time, those of you who have the skills to start efforts in these new areas, what we need is for you to come forward and be a part of that process. So I agree 100% that we need to be looking at social sciences and other areas, and, excuse me, we will do our best to try to cover all of the necessary areas, but do remember that you folks are empowered to come and help us do those things. So if you've got your ideas, bring them to us, but please try to help us get those jobs done with your skills.
It should be noted that none of us, shall we say, are blessed with immaculate perception in these regards. And, you know, the problems that we face require the best that all of us can bring to the table. Next question? Ma'am.
Can anybody of you have a feel for whether Congress is becoming more interested in the sciences and investigating because of global warming? That's certainly the most popular thing going right now.
Short answer is yes. Congress is becoming clearly more interested in global warming. Funding for scientific research for global warming issues is rising rapidly. I don't think that that's a major issue. I suspect that particularly if the Democrats win the next presidential election, that the amount of NASA fund, of spending or percentage of the NASA budget that goes in that direction will increase substantially as well. So I don't think that interest by Congress per se in scientific research concerning global warming is not, in my view, a major issue. Whether they're going to do something beyond that, such as a carbon tax or signing the equivalent of the Coyote Treaty, perhaps renegotiated, that's a less obvious issue.
Two here.
Yeah, it seems so far that we've been mostly addressing external affairs and external issues and how we're going to react to them. I think it's important to kind of turn our eyes in order to the society itself and talk about some internal issues. So my first question is, what is the current population of the NSS active paid membership? And what does the board directors, the board governors, and everyone else intend to do to increase it?
The question is, you know, from the standpoint of internal issues of the society, what is the state of, you know, of our numbers in terms of membership? And what are we doing to increase it? George, would you like to venture that, or?
Yeah, sure. I mean.
Could you walk?
Yeah. We can pass it down. We say we have about 20,000 folks, and that's broken into two different categories, one of which is sort of normal members, and then another is subscribers to the magazine. So it's plus or minus around there. And what are we trying to, you know? To a certain extent, a large portion, and this is going to be boring, is like direct mail. You may have detected this, being an NSS member. It's a little joke. Anyway, yeah, so we do direct mail out to people who are both inside the society and who are not inside the society, or who have been a part of the society and who are not currently a part of the society, and people who are just in other organizations. And I think the big effort is the internet, you know, to reach out to people, whether it's via advertising or via partnerships with space.com or other sites that attract a lot of people in to capture some of them into joining the society. Another thing that we do is partnerships, like we've got partnerships with the Kennedy Space Center Visitor Complex and are talking to other destinations like the Houston, Space Center Houston, and some of the other major space destinations, because they have hundreds of thousands of people who are interested in space, who go through their doors. And then, and then sort of some other sort of non-traditional partnerships, but partnerships that make sense. We've got a very successful one with the NASA Federal Credit Union, where we have sort of an opportunity where people who join our organization can then join their organization, and that's been very good. So, you know, the society over the last three years has increased in size by about 30% in terms of membership. And so it's definitely growing. And if you have any ideas about how to continue that growth, obviously, we're all ears because that's how we increase our own effectiveness and influence.
That was another one of my questions, is how is it going to go over time when obviously you're having to put this in the system right now? Just speak up a little bit. I mean, if you've got 30% increase in the last three years, I think that's incredible. I don't know if that's something that would be sustainable, or you have so many people very quickly, but I mean, you know to attribute that to?
I think we're just, I mean, you know, we're trying to keep the operations running well so that people don't get annoyed and leave. And we're also trying to do good thing, you know, do important work, you know? I think it's a mix of keeping the trains running on time, you know, to a certain extent, but also doing work that people believe in, you know? And also just getting out into as many venues that make sense, whether it's destinations or websites or partnerships, that people get exposed to the society so they at least have the opportunity to join if they want to.
Related to this, the notion of what is our constituency for, you know, what we're marketing, what we're trying to, you know, bring to, you know, bring to the world in terms of ideas, you know, options on a positive future for our species? I think our constituency is much broader than, you know, 20,000, you know, members and subscribe subscriptions, you know? Is that 200,000? Is that 2 million? You know, what, you know, pick your interest group, okay? And, you know, try and calibrate, you know, the most successful groups that you can think of and ask yourself the question, what are they marketing? Then ask yourself the question, what are we marketing? And I think you can get, you know, we can each gain some sense of, you know, what's our natural constituency? And I believe we, there's a whole hell of a lot of folks that have a compelling interest in providing for, helping to provide for a positive future for our species. Next question? Ronnie?
How do you do? I'm your vice president for membership. I'd like to address three points if I could, if I have, if this actually works. Maybe not. Hey, I think it did.
Yep, it looks like here.
Was it Kosh?
Kai.
Kai. Asked earlier about what, what do we have available to?
Can you come up to the floor, please?
Kai, asked earlier, what do we have available? I mean, I totally agree with George, we need, we don't have sufficient resources to hand out, but we do have a few right now. This is slightly out of date, the board just passed an update, and we'll get that on the website right away. But we do have a statement of philosophy that covers our vision statement, our mission statement, the rationale, our principles, and the other point, which is our.
Beliefs.
Beliefs?
Yes, our beliefs. And here, beliefs. That's on the website. If you go to About Us, and again, we'll get the update on there right away. Also, we have a Space Blitz event coming up in several weeks, and we will have handouts that we will be passing to Congress. It is just a page or two because we're organizing it with 20 other organizations or so. And those materials will be posted on the website either during that event or shortly thereafter. Again, those are things that are for public consumption that you can take to your local congressmen if you can't join us in Washington, and pass them out to schools and whoever else you meet. The other point, the third point.
Can I do it?
Yeah. Thank you. On membership, I'm always open to suggestions on how we can improve benefits to our members. We've been looking at the numbers, and in general, what we're finding is we're about break-even where we are right now. And so we have some options. You know, one is to encourage you to increase your level of participation in the organization monetarily, you know, raise up your level. And we will be talking to you on how to incentivize you to do that in terms of what would you like in return? What type of additional benefits would you like that can bring more revenue into the society that we can, that would allow us to do more activities? The other, there are other alternatives, which I would actually like to run a survey, either through @astro or direct mail, on, for example, and this is only an example, we have a stellar, award-winning magazine, but we're the only space organization that has anything comparable to that in the space advocacy movement. There are other organizations that invest more of those types of resources into hands-on type projects or more political activities. And I would like to have a survey of the membership to find out, do you want us to continue on the path we are? Would you like us to reallocate some of those types of resources into projects or other educational outreach activities or other political outreach activities? For example, the Energy Focus, that, you know, the market for that is not necessarily our magazine readers. And so we may have to divert some of those if that's what the membership wants. So I, you know, we're here to do the bidding of the membership, of the will of the membership, and I would certainly like your input for that. Thank you.
Next question? Here.
I'm Curtis Queen with NSS of Oklahoma, Texas. And first, I'd like to express my appreciation to the executive board and the committees for assisting us and advising us and organizing this conference. Second, I would like to acknowledge the Oklahoma Space Alliance, who put on a successful conference in 2004 and was the inspiration for our bidding and hosting this conference. Third, something you may not have been aware of, is that we got 15 seconds of publicity on the local news station, NBC News station, at 10 o'clock Saturday night.
Which one?
Oh, it's Channel 5 News, but it wasn't, it may have sounded great, but it really wasn't, it was really boring. And why was it boring? Because they just mentioned there was some group of space enthusiasts here who wanted to learn about settlement, et cetera, et cetera. 15 seconds. There's no mention that we had the second man who landed on the moon, the last man who landed on the moon, a woman who lived the longest, I mean, endured the longest in space. None of that, none of our special guests were mentioned at the conference. The cameraman wasn't here, but there was no reporter covering them. Now, I've lived in the Dallas Fort Worth area for over 20 years, and I don't recall there ever being two or three astronauts coming to town on the same day or same weekend. Yet, press was totally disinterested, not aware of any newspaper coverage, for example. So I'm asking myself, why is that? Well, we didn't do that good a job on local publicity, both, you know, the local chapters to blame and NSS chapters to blame too. And so I was thinking about this, and I would like to propose that, well, first, let me say, this conference mostly preaches to the choir. And we need this conference for ourselves, but we don't get much of the general public to come to this conference. So how do we reach out to the public who, as we mentioned, really doesn't have that much interest in space or doesn't know that much about it? So I thought, well, plenary sessions are rather popular, you know, most people come to them in the morning to hear them and, you know, we get the VIPs for lunches and dinners, and they're rather popular. So why don't we have, I would propose that NSS organize like a mini-conference, but not really a conference, more like a special evening event. Get two or three VIP speakers, people that the public may be familiar with, and have them speak to the general public, perhaps a dinner engagement, including a dinner engagement for one evening, three hours, in the fall, preferably during Space Week when you're there, and touring to a handful of cities where we have NSS chapters, especially the smaller ones.
So the proposal is that NSS sponsor a series of high-profile public events with, you know, known opinion leaders in the space movement to go off in conjunction with our local chapters, you know, around the country and hopefully around the world.
Emphasize local advertising.
And emphasize local advertising and, you know, well, you know, directed outreach in the accessible communities. Personally, I think that's a wonderful idea, and, you know, that, you know, we have, one of the, one of the interesting things is, I don't know whether or not you've looked at our list of Board of Advisors and Board of Governors, okay? Now, one, you know, they're all, they're all alive, we made sure of that, okay? Secondly, they're all interested, okay? And one of the things that we're, you know, trying to do, and it's also tied in, you know, Robbie Gaines, you know, had to, you know, had to leave early this morning, he's our vice president in terms of development. I know he's been acutely interested in, you know, setting up these sorts of, these sorts of events. And please, call us out on it, okay? Talk to us, talk to, you know, talk to Robbie, let's make something real. It can, can, and, you know, we'll make a difference. Anyone like to add to that? Next, next question?
Jim's been busy.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna need to get up there.
Okay.
Go back to the others. Anybody here familiar with Wikipedia?
Yes.
Why, show of hands, Wikipedia? Has anybody been to Wikipedia late? Okay. Hit it.
A little hard to see.
Yeah. I've been a little bit busy.
Yes.
You can scroll down through it there. Obviously, background, hyperlinks to back history of the National Space Institute, the L-5 Society, hyperlinks to the music videos of our, To Touch the Star is CD. I'm not sure if any of you were aware that there were some music videos that have been made. Go ahead and hit Witness's Waltz, it's going to take you over to YouTube. And I don't know if you have audio patched in or not.
Probably not.
Okay. But.
It's a little video footage or musical.
Yeah, it's a music, it's a music, it's a music video. You know? But I mean, yeah, if you get a chance, go and visit the Wikipedia site, and if you want to contribute a little bit more to help, you know, clean things up a little bit, to put in, you know, a little bit more history or relevancy. The main thing is, obviously, Wikipedia is one of those new media sites that, you know, a lot of folks go to for the beginnings of their research and whatnot. It's a way of getting more eyeballs on us and possibility of maybe getting some more members into the organization. There's cross-links also to the ISDC, there's a webpage for ISDC. There's also a, we just put in just a couple of days ago, the link to the Hello World website that Jay Whitner's involved with that was doing the webcasting of the conference in case we had some folks that were able to.
But it's off of the NSS.org?
It will be. Well, I mean, the MSS webpage is in there. You know, they can go to the NSS.org if they want to, you know, go to the parent.
Does it work the other way?
It will. Yeah, now that he's a little bit more aware of what's going on.
You should also be aware that. You should also be aware that, you know, the NSS Experimental, the NSS Experimental WikiFarm, after June 1st, will no longer be experimental, okay? You know, will, basically, you know, well, it is, you know, a tool that, you know, well, you know, is, takes, you know, well, you know, Wikipedia, but the, the equivalent of that technology, it allows us to, you know, you know, wield that for the ongoing work of the society in all of its different aspects.
Is that something that links off the NSS?
It'll link off the NSS website.
It'll be on the About Us page.
Right.
Hi, NSS is also, I guess, co-sponsoring or affiliated with Lunarpedia, which is a website specifically about the moon. And we, we got a brand-new Marspedia as well, that's affiliated with NSS. The Marspedia is looking for input. The Lunarpedia already has enough that you would enjoy browsing, but please contribute to both of those.
It was noted that the excellent efforts with respect to Lunarpedia and the developing Marspedia are, you know, are, are resources that we're adding to this.
While we're on the subject of electronic media, I mean, the Wikipedia are great for collecting information and sharing information, but there's also been the topic of being able to meet virtually. We don't have to all get together here in Dallas or one place locally. We can meet on the Internet, in sites. There was a demonstration, as you know, Second Life, that's kind of the cute way of doing it. But there are a lot of ways we could have virtual meetings of, say, interest groups. If John's group is interested in lowering launch costs, another group is interested in astro sociology, another group is interested in solar power, satellites, another group is interested in space colonies, another group is interested in, you name it, we could create interest areas where members could get together virtually and have interchanges and talk about things, great products, be at, or do whatever. Does this interest anybody? Is this something that the other is pursuing as a society?
Well, sort of, yeah.
Okay, can we report on it? Do we have it? Or it was, we have?
Okay, for at least five years, we've had a capability, it's called the MOO, it stands for, it evolved out of one of the multiplayer games, but it's, it's a, it's a website where you can type.
What's the website called again?
So, so we've had the capability, where is the mic?
There is no mic.
Okay, right there. So, we've had the capability for several years of online chat. This is text-only, but, but any, anybody can go there, anybody can type, and everybody sees what everybody else types. There hasn't been a lot of interest. What we need is coordination, is someone to say, you know, hey, let's meet, you know, the first Tuesday of every month at, at such and such time. Does anybody remember what time of week is Cheryl?
Thursday night, Thursday night at 9:00 or 8:00 p.m.
Thursday night at 8:00 or 9:00 p.m., Cheryl York does run an open kind of chat session. We have had offers for audio links and, and webcasting. I don't know of anybody who had the initiative to basically start that project. I'm Bruce McKenzie, you can leave me a note over there if you want to help organize it.
Can I make a comment on that? I am a tremendous fan of bulletin boards. I cannot stand chat room. What do you have in the way of bulletin?
We actually need your help on this. I am Acting Chair of the Internet Services Committee, and we need, there's a lot of things we need to do to push us forward into the 21st century. And I think we're still halfway between the 20th century and sometimes some people believe we're in the 19th century. So, we have, there's, we're tremendously short of volunteers. One of the things I was talking about in terms of reallocating resources is, one thing we may need, if we can't find adequate volunteers, is to actually pay for IT support, you know, that type of IT support, to bring us further into the 21st century. We had a, a forum capability. Unfortunately, we discovered last year that it had a security hole, and before we could act, we lost half our website. Fortunately, we had it on backups, and we recovered it within hours. But needless to say, that was quickly shut down, and we have yet to replace it with something. And so, if you have ideas on what we can do, on where we can go, how we can implement it, we would definitely appreciate that.
How do we send it to you, or ideas?
You can talk to me or email me, ronnie@ronnie.lajoie@nsa.org.
Let me make a general point. I'll make a general point. High-tech organization with one microphone. Anyway, like, I think standpoint is really important, that NSS, sort of embedded in NSS's DNA is the ideas that we're, that we're a really participatory organization, a democratic organization. It's not all top-down, it's bottom-up, and I don't think we're using, broadly speaking, modern communication technologies as well as we could to sort of show that that is the case. And I mean, partly, that's just, you know, there's so many new ones coming out every day, but, I mean, I, I really think that something that we should focus on over the next year or so is to work on that. Our website is not where it is, and that's sort of, that should be the node for all of these different things, whether it's Wikis or Skype or bulletin boards or, you know, you know, I mean, all different, all different kinds of things. And, and so, I think because it's part of who we are, we need to make sure that that's represented in what we show to the world. And what we show to the world, I think, more than anything else, frankly, at least on a per-person basis, is the website, you know, and, and everything that that entails. So, yeah, I mean, I would love, one of the things that we need to find are more people who are interested in working on this, who do this in their everyday lives. That is to say, professionals, if possible, who want to help with, with, with Internet technologies. And so, I would put that out there to any of you. If you know people who are professionals, who'd like to donate some time to the society in this area, we really could use their help. So, I'll leave it at that.
Yes. Oh, one, you know, one preface, you know, with things like Second Life, NSS, you know, is, you know, soon have its own island. I personally refer to it as Island One. We'd like it to be a space colony, okay? So, you know, in, in interesting angles. One of the key things you should be aware of is, in order to increase our options, you know, I, I wear another hat. I'm, I'm a, an IT, you know, support contractor, supporting the infrastructure for NSS, and we are making the investment in the infrastructure to be able to support any, you know, any, any technology that we can find, you know, while the enthusiasm in our, in our membership and volunteers to help us carry forward. And it should, I can't, you know, overask, overemphasize the importance. Our most valuable resource as a society is our dedicated volunteers' time, their willingness to help us in, by lending their efforts to help make things happen. It's your, our collective contributions together that make a difference in terms of our success and progress for our goals. Next question?
While we're on volunteers, we need volunteers for lots of things, including IT. And if you're interested, the best way is to buttonhole one of us and talk to us and get involved. The alternative way is to go to our website, which you can get by simply Googling National Space Society, following the obvious links to our volunteer signup page, where it asks you what your skills are and what you're interested in, et cetera. And that'll give you, get you on our list of volunteers, and probably more work than you really want to do.
Is there anybody that hasn't asked a question?
I wanted to add to that, another of the resources that we have in the electronic world. I'm the keeper of the archives. We have what is the equivalent of a bunch of dusty boxes where we dump all the, the old files and papers from various old conferences and things like that, so that future historians will be able to find some of the material. There is a public section of that, and you will find it off of www.islandone.org/ISDC, in all caps.
It's also on Wikipedia.
You know, I'm under, you know, any pursuit or desire to run away. I think it's fantastic that you all have taken the time to, you know, participate in this activity, but in all fairness, we only told you that, you know, that, subject you to this for two hours. You know, it is technically 10:30. I, you know, I would welcome, you know, well, you know, people continuing in this discussion to the extent that you care to, but at this point, I would like to point out, I very much appreciate the fact that you all took the time to come here, and all, you know, take your pick in terms of the, you know, the, you know, the officers of NSS, the Board of Directors of NSS, we're all accessible. If you've got questions, if there's something that you are concerned about, if there's something that you think you, we should be doing, let us know. You know, we are, we're, we're supposed to be helping, you know, you know, helping to take point on, you know, doing things that make a difference, that reflect the views of our membership. So, we need to hear, hear from you.
I agree.
Gary?
Yes.
If anybody would like to help or give advice or discuss anything online, you can email us, online discussions, chat room, or come up and talk to Ronnie and NSA.
I'd like to thank you all.